This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August the 6th. Please stand for our invocation led by Thomas Hurd, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us take a moment to enter into the presence of God. Let us pray. Holy God, Creator of all that is, all that will be, we thank you for this beautiful place in which we live. We confess that we have not lived up to our obligations to care for it or each other. Help us to find our way to care for this beautiful place we live, this beautiful world we live in. Help us to find the way to care for each other. Lord, we ask your blessing upon this city, upon our state, our country. Help us to be instruments of your peace. Help our leaders who we've called to represent us to represent our interests. These things we ask in your holy and blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk Office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. For such that he or she wishes to express it, the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk Office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing, the second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of July 30th.
So moved. Second.
And proper moving, second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. Appreciate you taking time to join us today. I have several announcements. For those of you who have been watching the Olympics, it can be hard to watch them without realizing that one of Mobile's athletes, swimmer Paige Madden, has again won medals. Actually, this time she's won two. She won a silver medal in the 4x200 freestyle relay and a bronze medal in the 800-meter freestyle. She actually swam in 800 meters freestyle, swam five seconds faster than she's ever swam before. And then for any athlete to beat their record by five seconds, even in that distance of a race, is amazing. She's an amazing young lady. Just to kind of remind you, she was a member of the Mobile Swim Association when she was here in Mobile. She won seven Alabama high school state, she set seven Alabama state high school records. Eleven-time state champion while attending high school at UMS Wright. She's a four-time NC 2A champion at Virginia. She is probably Mobile's most decorated athlete of all the number of years that she's been doing this. She's a testament to what you can accomplish when you pair God-given talent and hard work and determination. So join me and let's just give Paige a big round of applause. I was able to text her mother and congratulate Paige and told her when she came back to Mobile, we wanted to do something very special for her. So we'll wait to see when we can work that out, but we'll let the public know how they can participate in that. Also that today, I'd like to announce that we have the, what we call the PAFRA. That stands for Popular Annual Financial Report. It's an easy-to-read financial statement for the city of Mobile. It's made available to the public. You know, it's not something that cities are required to do, but there are a lot of charts, a lot of graphs, tell you about income and how many are spent. So it's, I hope that you will take that and have used it to better understand how we collect our money and where the money is spent. And since 2018, our finance department has been nationally recognized for the quality of these public records. So we really appreciate what they do. But I can say, kind of the bottom line is that our financial outlook has been strong over the last 10 years. It continues to be strong as we look forward. We will continue to pay down debt, continue to streamline city revenues and assets while we're tackling some major projects. Anytime you're tackling projects the size that we're tackling, paying attention to the small expenditures in the city becomes increasingly important. So we will continue to look how we can continue to tighten up in certain areas while we make these major expenditures specifically regarding the civic city. There are plenty of copies available in the lobby for anybody that would like to have them. Also on today's agenda, there's a big couple of items having to do with Amtrak. And we've been talking about this since 2019. We took a little hiatus after COVID and while some other negotiations were going on. But over the last eight months, we have been diligently working with our partners to work out an agreement between the city and the Port Authority and Amtrak. And just remind you that we're not aware of anywhere else in the United States where in a city like Mobile, there are five Class 1 railroads, there are two major interstates, we connect to 5,000 miles of inland waterways. We're also the second fastest growing seaport, and we have an international airport. We actually have two airports. You add that to a major passenger rail service connected to several major coastal cities, and it really makes Mobile stand out. The return of Amtrak and the millions of dollars of infrastructure improvements will support freight and passenger rail a vital to our continued growth. Now through the Chrissy Grant, there will be over $100 million of infrastructure improvements between here and New Orleans, and it's really contingent upon us making this agreement today that triggers that investment, as I understand it. Well, a lot of people really that must be thanked for that. The Mobile City Council has been engaged from the very beginning on this. Alabama State Port Authority, Governor Kay Ivey, the CSX Railroad, the Southern Rail Commission, and of course, Amtrak. It took all of us working together to make this come together, and we believe it's a win-win-win-win situation. And we look forward to the day that Mobileans can go to New Orleans on the train and that New Orleans can come to Mobile and those that live in between. So we thank for the citizens' input. I know that we have some Amtrak advocates, I think, in the audience. Is that right? Yeah, raise your hand. Thank y'all for being here today. So anyway, that would conclude my remarks, except I do have a proclamation that I would like to read to our Coast Guard. So I'm going to go to the podium and I'd ask the captains and commander Ferguson to join me, Captain Lugo and Captain Vega, if y'all will join me at the podium. Privilege every year of saying this, but there's no other city in the United States that can claim that they have three major commands of the Coast Guard in their city. We have the Aviation Training Center, we have the Sector Command, and the Gulf Coast Strike Team. And that is the commanders of those three major commands are standing behind me today. So it's a huge, huge benefit to the city of Mobile that they have chosen to be here. They've been here for a long period of time. Mobile is recognized as a Coast Guard city, and I'd like to read the proclamation. And then I'll ask the commander or the captains if they would like to make a few remarks. And the proclamation reads, "The United States Coast Guard was established on August 4th, 1790, when the first Congress authorized the construction of 10 vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws and to prevent smuggling. And whereas the first Coast Guard presence in Mobile was when the US Revenue Cutter Alabama was assigned to the port of Mobile in August of 1819, as served in every US conflict, earning 43 battle streamers is the oldest continuous USC going service. And whereas the city of Mobile serves as a home for three major commands, Sector Mobile, Aviation Training Center, and the Gulf Coast Strike Team, in total representing over 600 personnel. And whereas the city of Mobile is proud to recognize two centuries of ongoing partnership and collaboration with the United States Coast Guard and 22 years as an official Coast Guard city, now therefore I, William S. Stimson, the 108th mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim August 4th, 2024, as Coast Guard Day in the city of Mobile. Congratulations and thank you for what you do."
Good morning to this distinguished body and all those that are here. I just want to say I feel personally welcomed. I've been here about a month, and I feel personally welcomed by this committee. And it is great to be in the state of Alabama and the city of Mobile. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor Stimson, thanks very much for this. And the councilmembers, thank you much for this honor. It's amazing part to be part of this organization. It's been around for 234 years. I've been, I'll call myself a transplant Mobilean since 2017. My kids are a product of our school system here. It's a wonderful school system, and now they're up at Auburn doing great things. Just to say, it's been amazing time here. You know, I've been here since 2017, seven years now. The city of Mobile has been nothing but supportive for the Coast Guard and my team here as well. And just to give you a small glimpse, I'm about to retire one of my members this Friday, who spent 18 of his 20 years careers in Mobile. That's how much this place means to a lot of people. A lot of folks come here, they stay here, what we call lifers, and it's just a great testament to the city itself. Thanks so much.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us, distinguished guests. Thanks for this opportunity. I haven't been here long myself, just like Captain, but I have been so welcomed, and I really appreciate all the support. And I'll talk about the crew. The crew of the Gulf Strike Team, their morale is happy. They love coming to work, they love what they do, and they love the city of Mobile. And a lot of that is a testament to the support that you all provide, so thank you.
Captain Snowden really appreciates what Sector Commander Michael Vega does, having done the same job previously, and what Captain Lugo does as far as the ATC. But he has this really special place in his heart for Commander Ferguson because she bought his house when she showed up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And good morning again. This week, the council and also the mayor, we are recognizing National Health Center Week. At this time, I ask that we have represented from Mostella Health, Franklin Primary Health Center, Accorder Health, and also the Mobile County Health Department. Will y'all please come down at this time? And the proclamation reads, "For over 50 years, the community health center have provided high-quality, affordable, compassionate, primary, provincial healthcare in our nation, medical undeserved communities, delivering value to and have a significant impact on American healthcare systems. And whereas community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving rural, suburban, and urban population, often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. And whereas community health centers serve as a beacon of essential resources and support in the face of disaster and pandemics, will continue to respond quickly to the care for American most vulnerable and undeserved communities. And whereas the community health center reduce overall cost of care by helping managing patient chronic conditions, which keeps them out of more expensive healthcare settings like hospital emergency room. And whereas the community health center models continue to provide an effective mean of overcoming barriers in healthcare assess, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes and reducing healthcare system costs. And whereas the National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of American community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, the present, and the future of American healthcare system. And now therefore I, President CJ Small of District 3, and the members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor, say and extend and proclaim August the 4th through the 10th, 2024, as National Health Center Week in Mobile, Alabama, and encourage all to participate in this week by visiting their local health centers and celebrating this partnership between American community health centers and the communities that they serve down at the city of Mobile, Alabama on this sixth day of August, 2024. Congratulations to each of you.
I want to thank y'all for this recognition. I think I speak for all of us when I say how important this is to our community and how much it's a passion for all of us to take care of the folks in our community and help them with their healthcare. Thank you.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on...
I think we need to adopt the agenda.
Oh. Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Proper moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on August 24th on Edgewood, November 17th Battleship Parkway, and January 18th on Dolphin Street.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Brian Fuenmayor.
Buenos dias and good morning. My name is Brian Fuenmayor. I live at 300 North Water Streets in Williams Carrows District. I'm here with my leadership team as representatives of a grassroots group called Mobile for Amtrak. They're waving over there. They're too shy to come up to the podium right now. We're extremely excited about the upcoming votes and resolutions in order to bring Amtrak here for many reasons. Not only will this benefit our region economically, but also help improve our quality of life and attract people here, but also retain them. I know that's one of the issues that Mobile has is retaining, especially our youth here. We consider the return of investment, it just makes sense to invest these $2 million here. And with all the work that the city and yourselves have put into this, we're extremely excited about the prospects that Amtrak service will return here. And we really encourage you to vote yes on that. I saw Williams Carrows not here today, but I'm hoping we'll still get a majority vote, vote yes. And all that to say is, we really appreciate all that you do for our city. We know it's not an easy job being on the city council in the public eye. You'll get a lot of negative comments from the public, but we try to do as best as a group to be respectful and positive in our messages towards you. So all that to say, we hope that you vote yes in this upcoming vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penn?
I just want to thank Brian for coming down. I totally agree. I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Mobile to bring Amtrak quality of life. I think this is an opportunity to allow visitors to come into our great city. We have so much opportunity here in the city of Mobile. So I'm definitely will be supporting, and I've been supporting this initiative because I think this is a great opportunity. Thank you again. Thank you for the organization for coming down.
Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and happy early birthday. We'll see you next week. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Today marks 60 years since Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of 1964 into law here in this country, our 36th president of the United States of America. And in that same spirit, I rise today continuing to fight for many people who don't even know a fight is going on. Here with the use of our taxpayer resources in this municipality we each call home. Based on the agenda, there are a few items that I would like to touch. Of course, we know with 180 seconds, there's not enough time to go through all these in detail, but we will do our best with what is allotted. Let's begin, please, by looking at the upcoming budget. We understand that there are some meetings that are in the future to be had dealing with the committee as well as public hearings for the people to come and say their spiel about how we believe these resources should be spent. One thing I would like to challenge this body to do, however, is to look at the drainage. Please look at the drainage. The Finance Chair many times has said that it would take about $200 million to even put a small dent into the drainage issues that we have here in the city. I believe that districts 1 through 3 have an issue that has been overlooked for quite some time. And as well, I believe with the CIP resources, if you combine all that is received from each district and additional that is allotted per year to the city to use for miscellaneous projects, we could use one term to actually take care of the drainage. I mentioned last week how we're seeing the new pavements throughout the streets, which looks nice. We're seeing the sidewalk developments, which looks nice. But I guarantee you, if you surveyed the citizens of Mobile, they would prefer to have the drainage issue because we know with 10 to 15 minutes of a hard rain here, it floods regardless of what district you stay in. Let's look, please, at the public safety protocols. On July 25th, I sent a letter to Mr. Stimson. It said pursuant to HB 289, 2023, in the Code of Alabama Subsections 36, that's 22, that's 212C1, this is a form of request for release of the body camera footage captured on July 19th out of around 7:02 PM Central by Officer Jonathan Chris. I have not received anything. You all passed the bill as well to allow the body camera footage to be released to certain individuals. There are about six, I believe, items that designate who can receive that. So I want to give this vote to the administration, Mr. Stimson as well, for wanting to be following the record with the clerk's office. We're waiting for that information, hopefully we can get something now. We don't have the time to really dive into the Mobile City Center. However, I will remind you that there is no proof of the funding, and even after what you proved last week, there is no completed site plan. We know that all this stuff is really in the works still. And I want you to consider, as we move forward, this, the downtown businesses, the arts culture, and the people who are being left behind because of us not really looking at this the way that we should. This is not a priority right now. We have time to get it right. Thank you for your on the floor.
Madam Clerk?
Kenny Orne.
Mr. Orne is present. Madam Clerk?
Ashley Harrison.
Ms. Harrison present. Madam Clerk?
David Preston.
What is it, Mr. Preston?
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolutions 01709, 710, and 711.
My name is David Preston. I live on Winchester Drive in Mobile. That's District 4, Councilman Reynolds District. I'm coming to speak to you today in support of the Amtrak resolutions that are on your agenda today. Me personally, I know that I'm going to end up taking the Amtrak train to New Orleans at least two or three times within the first year that it's in existence because I'm currently in the process of researching a project for my next Unknown Soldier book and a series of novels that I'm working on. And it will be based, the plot will be based in World War II time. So I will be traveling to New Orleans two or three times to the National War, World War II Museum for research purposes. And that'll allow me to get on the train here in Mobile, ride over to New Orleans, and either roll or hopefully walk, because hopefully by that time I'll be walking with a prosthetic, which the, if you're not familiar with where the train station is in New Orleans, it's just blocks away from the World War II Museum. I understand that there is an amendment under consideration that would terminate the agreement between the city and Amtrak if the Amtrak chooses to expand the services beyond eastward or northward. And I would respectfully request that this council consider an amendment to the amendment that would allow the contract to be terminated by a vote of the council at the time if those services are expanded, because just like with airports, the more destinations you have with Amtrak, the more successful the Amtrak service will be in your city. And so if we have that leverage to say that we can end the contract with the vote, we can go to, at the time, that will allow the council at the time, whenever that time comes, to reassess if that money is continued to be needed or not. You know, at that time, Amtrak may say, we don't need the money anymore. Y'all can terminate the contract and everything's hunky-dory. They may say, we can expand the services, but we still need the service, the money that we've already been obligated to. And at that point, the council may decide to do that. But having that caveat of having a vote gives the city and Amtrak the ability to negotiate those terms. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
CIP resolutions held over, 21706, authorized contract of HCL Contracting for 2024 CIP resurfacing, District 4. 21707, authorized contract of engineering consulting services southeast for 2024 CIP resurfacing, District 4.
So moved. Second.
Proper moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over, 01708, authorized agreement with Fresh Food Hospitality to provide concession services for the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico. 01709...
Let's take it separately.
Okay.
On 01708, so moved.
Second.
Proper moving, second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
01709, authorized funding agreement with National Railroad Passenger Corporation for Gulf Coast rail service.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving, second, in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dave.
I've been a longtime critic of the plan to restore passenger rail service between Mobile and Pensacola. I will, I'm not going to repeat my concerns this morning as they have been voiced publicly for years. I still have grave concerns about the financial viability of this line and its putative impact on Mobile's economy. on Mobile's economy. I have, however, also been a longtime supporter of the Port of Mobile. I've often said that the port is the linchpin of our economy, and what is good for the port is good for Mobile. What's bad for the port is bad for Mobile. Several changes, important changes, alter the circumstances under which I have to make my decision on whether it is appropriate to devote city of Mobile taxpayer resources to this project. First is that the financial arrangements for the city of Mobile have changed. Through the good work of the mayor and his staff, the city's contribution of three million dollars will be reduced dramatically. The Port of Mobile has committed to provide one million dollars toward the city's share, and there exists the possibility of getting another million dollars from the state of Alabama. The funding agreement between the city and Amtrak has been altered so as to make it absolutely clear that the city accepts no responsibility for funding the line after the first three years. If the proponents of the rail service want it to continue after that time, they're going to have to go to someone else for the money. Now, I want to say a few things about the intersection between the Amtrak project and the vitality of the port. The port can only survive and prosper with a robust land, sea, and air transportation infrastructure around it. Shippers must be able to move their traffic in and out of the port quickly and efficiently. We can have the deepest ship channel in the country. We can have the most efficient container facility in the country. But if shippers face long delays in moving traffic in and out, they will go elsewhere. Time is of the essence when shipping. Currently, containers can get from the ship in Mobile to Chicago in just three days. This is a significant competitive advantage for the port and for our state's economy. The seventy-two million dollars in rail improvements and the completion of the new Mobile River Bridge and Bayway will ensure that the Port of Mobile is supported by first-class transportation infrastructure. So the port is critical to Mobile, and the transportation infrastructure, which comes along with this commitment to Amtrak, are critical to the port. I'll therefore support the measure. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Mr. President.
Uh, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague, Mr. Daves, said it best, and I won't repeat everything he said, but I agree with his statements. He and I, along with Councilman Small, were here when the idea of Amtrak first came to us, and I was one of the ones who was absolutely flabbergasted that the city of Mobile would be asked and basically expected to become a funding partner to the tune of three million dollars along with some federal government subsidize, uh, subsidization. But, um, the state of Alabama really should have been that third partner all along, along with the state of Mississippi, along with the state of Louisiana. And hopefully now the state will come through with a commitment in their next budget, and I thank Mayor Stimson for reaching out to try to make this happen. You know, there have been a number of issues along the way. We've talked about those, and, you know, I for one was skeptical that we would really ever get to this point where a number of us on the council would agree to this funding mechanism and being a partner. But the, the Alabama Port Authority, as Mr. Daves has said, has joined as a funding partner, and getting, um, this grant for the infrastructure improvements is very, very important to the city of Mobile and to the state as a whole. The city's role through these agreements, as you've heard, will limit our funding exposure for the operations to the three years. The language has been tightened up to a great degree to really protect the city and its operations. So with the ports agreement, um, and hopefully the state coming on board in their next budget, which I am very hopeful will happen, I can support these agreements. It has been a long time coming, I know, and I hope this is a terrific success for everyone.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
With the deepening and widening of the ship channel, container terminal expansion, the airport moving downtown, and the recent five-hundred-fifty-million-dollar bridge funding announcement from our federal partners, Mobile is becoming the multimodal hub for North America. Couple that with federally funded and critical rail improvements that come with our Amtrak agreements, Mobile can add passenger rail to those modal options. These investments, along with the city's commitment today, are going to have a positive lasting input, impact on all Americans. We hope. I want to thank Councilman Woods, Councilman Daves, for really digging in and working with the administration to resolve these issues and get them to a place where we can all sort of feel good about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. And Mr. Woods.
Um, I think my opinion's been well documented over the past week, week and a half, but, um, I, I do want to take a moment. Um, I've, I've said it over and over again. Um, this isn't perfect. Uh, this is, uh, you know, not Josh Woods' Perfect World. But I, I am very happy, um, you know, that we, we were able to really sit down with the administration. So I do want to thank the mayor, thank the administration for actually sitting down with me, hearing my concerns, and, um, and working towards finding an agreement. Also, uh, do want to say we have members of the Southern Rail Commission, um, in, in the House here. So I, I do want to say that, um, thank you for the work that you've done, but also too, uh, you know, this, this gets the first three years. So, um, I, I just would hope that, um, we could find another funding source, um, moving forward. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero-one, seven-ten. Authorized intergovernmental agreement with Alabama State Port Authority for Amtrak Gulf Coast Service Project.
Uh, Mr. Davis.
I, I intend to offer an amendment to, uh, this, but I'd like to ask Mr. Woods to explain the amendment and read it.
Sure. This is the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. It's paragraph three on page two of the agreement, and it, it specifically, and I'll read it in a minute, it gives the Port Authority the obligation to terminate the intergovernmental agreement should the lease between the city and Amtrak be terminated by, uh, by a lease termination option event.
I offer that amendment, Mr. Preston.
Can we, um, have a, a motion to put on the table?
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry. So I, so I'll move, I'll move zero-one, seven-ten.
Second.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion.
Yes, sir. I move that amendment that Mr. Woods just read.
Second.
All right, second. Another discussion. All in favor on amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Amendment passed? Another additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero-one, seven-eleven. Authorized men agreement with National Railroad Passenger Corporation for Gulf Coast Rail Service.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis.
I have amendment to offer to that also, and again, ask Mr. Woods to explain that amendment.
Sure. This is on page five of sixteen of the lease agreement. It's paragraph section eight point two specifically reads, "This agreement shall be terminated by Mobile upon service not less than ninety days written notice to Amtrak if Amtrak uses the leased area to support any regularly scheduled any city rails, passenger service via train between the city of Mobile and the city of New Orleans, other than the currently anticipated two trains per day each way, or points beyond either the northern or eastern city limits of Mobile."
Move the amendment, Mr. Preston.
I get a second. Proper moving second on amendment and then discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Amendment passed? Another discussion. I would like to say, um, downtown Mobile, they're likely about to be hot and popping. You know, we're able to take the cruise ship from downtown Mobile, and we're about to get ready to take a train from downtown Mobile, and the next year or so, we're going to be flying from downtown Mobile. So great things going on in the city of Mobile, and I'm very excited to be a citizen here in Mobile. Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero-one, seven-twelve. Authorized agreement number two with the State of Alabama Department of Transportation for the One Mobile Reconnecting People Walk and Play Through Complete Streets Initiative. So moved.
Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero-eight, seven-thirteen. Approved purchase order to Next Gen Asset Management for renewal of software. Zero-eight, seven-fourteen. Approved purchase order to CareSoft for annual renewal of cloud backup software. Zero-eight, seven-fifteen. Approved purchase order to Office Equipment Company of Mobile Inc. for furniture. Zero-eight, seven-sixteen. Approved purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for Leather, Fire Boots, and Helmets. Zero-eight, seven-seventeen. Approved purchase order to Global Industries for Furniture. Zero-eight, seven-eighteen. Approved purchase order to Marine One, doing business as Rescue One Connector for Rescue Boat and Inflatable Boat Motors and Trailer. Zero-eight, seven-nineteen. Approved purchase order to Cannon Solutions. America for Image Digitization Services. Zero-eight, seven-twenty. Accept item award bid for swimming pool chemicals. Twenty-one, seven-twenty-one. Authorized contract with Sydney Barber doing business as Allstate Fence for Cruise Terminal Motorized Vehicle Gates. Thirty-seven, seven-twenty-two. Consider the application of Bennett's Care LLC to operate a shuttle service. Forty-five, seven-twenty-three. Accept Wind Gateway of Windfield Subdivision for City Maintenance. Sixty-seven, twenty-four, and seven-twenty-five. Authorized settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-two, zero-four-four.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced zero-nine, seven-twenty-six through sixty-seven, thirty-six.
Moved to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk.
Zero-nine, seven-twenty-six. Transfer funds from District One General Fund Discretionary Account to Mobile Parks and Recreation General Fund for twenty-twenty-four United We Stand Rap Festival. Thirty-one, seven-twenty-seven. Authorized the mayor to apply accept and receive grant funding from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Gomesa funding for the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico, No Local Match. Thirty-seven, seven-twenty-eight. Seven-twenty-nine, seven-thirty, and seven-thirty-one are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for FNL August on Government Street for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Buzz Bull Creamery on Government Street, for issuance of a restaurant retail lic, liquor license for Slurp Society Ramen Shop on Dolphin Street, for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to AMICI on Cottage Hill Road. Fifty-eight, seven-thirty-two, seven-thirty-three. Authorized removal of weeds and assessing cost for removal of weeds, groups sixteen-fifty-eight and sixteen-fifty-seven. Sixty-seven, thirty-four, seven-thirty-five, and seven-thirty-six are determining appropriations to the Mobile Area Boy Scouts of America and Hillsdale Athletic Booster Club Serve a Public Purpose and Approving Payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced zero-one, seven-thirty-seven through twenty-one, seven-forty-eight.
Moved to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolution zero-one dash seven-thirty-seven with the rest being laid over for one week per council rules.
Second. Proper moving second in discussion.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President.
Madam.
On this resolution, zero-one dash seven-thirty-seven, this is for the Three Mile Creek Trail Project at Segment One that begins with a trailhead at the Charles Wood Japanese Gardens, uh, which is in District Seven. This is just getting us another step closer to construction. The Alabama Department of Conserv, of Alabama Department of Transportation, rather, will sign off on this, and that will get us ever closer to being able to begin, uh, work there on the trail.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Zero-one, seven-thirty-seven. Authorized covenant of purpose agreement with Mobile Greenway Initiative Three Mile Creek Trail Project Segment One.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one, seven-forty-nine. Call for public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at fourteen-eighty Satchel Page Drive, scheduled September tenth. Forty-one, seven-fifty. Call for public hearing to consider proposed conditional use permit for property located at sixty-four-eleven Howells Ferry Road, scheduled September tenth. Forty-one, seven-fifty-one. Call for public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of the property located at sixty-four-eleven Howells Ferry Road from R-three to R-three, scheduled September tenth. Forty-one, seven-fifty-two. Call for public hearing to consider the application of Johnson &amp; Johnson Way to Go to operate a sedan and shuttle service scheduled August twentieth. And seven, forty-one, seven-fifty-three. Call for public hearing to consider the application of community care and transportation to operate a shuttle service scheduled August twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Woods.
Uh, no announcements, Mr. President.
District Five, Councilman Davis.
No announcements.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
No announcements.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
No announcements.
And, uh, next week I'll have some, um, community meetings, uh, dates that will be announced into District Three. Anything from the administration?
Mr. President, I actually do have an announcement.
Yes, sir.
Today, we approved a contract for two-point-seven million dollars to resurface roads in District Four. When this process started, we were allocated three million dollars within our CIP annually to spend in our districts. We, we have a planning contract that, that, or design contract that was also a part of this, plus some surveying work. So it totals about three million dollars of CIP, which, when this was planned, that's all we were getting annually in our CIP district-wide funds. And I made a commitment several years back to say, we're going to spend every dime we get into resurfacing roads, and the city only resurfaces roads every other year. And this represents, this contract represents the largest resurfacing contract in regards to CIP for any one district in the history of the city. So I want to make that, everybody out there aware that in District Four, we're committed to resurfacing roads as well as fixing drainage throughout the district, and I look forward to advocating for more projects like this down the road. That's it, Mr. President. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Proper moving second in discussion. Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Penn.
I did, I, um, I, I would like to ask, um, the community, the city of Mobile, to keep the family of, um, Pastor Sanford Davis, um, in your prayers. Um, Pastor Sanford Davis recently, uh, passed this weekend. He said on the board, um, of adjustments for the city of Mobile, he represented my, um, seat. So please keep his family in your prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?